Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock and time to begin our planning commission for the city of Yukon for the month of May. Our first item will be the invocation given by Commissioner Davis, followed by the flag salute given led by Commissioner Hatley. Please stand.
Father God, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the weather and we pray that you protect us against violent storms. Lord, we pray for our police officers and all our service people, that you watch over them and keep them out of harm's way. Lord, we pray that you give us the knowledge and guidance to do the things that benefit the city of Yukon tonight. Amen, Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Hatley?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
First item is approval of the minutes of April 11th, 2016 meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or additions, or do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the minutes as typed.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes. Item two is the visitor's section. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address the commissioners about an item that is not agended on tonight's agenda, a separate item, is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak to the commission? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed with item three, to hear a request by Neil Gray, who is proposing a second curb cut of 4817 Elk Run, Yukon, Oklahoma. Mr. Gray, would you feel step to the platform, introduce yourself, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Neil Gray, 4817 Elk Run, Yukon.
Tell us why you want this curb cut and what it's for, sir.
You've probably got a item there that doesn't show this, but this is a 30 by 30 building I had erected in August of this past year. And this is the purpose for this. It'll go east. The curb cut will be, as you can see on your photographs there, the curb cut will go east for 130 feet. Well, the curb cut will be there. driveway will be 130 feet to go back and curve into this 16, actually 10-foot door right here. The curb will be out here and curve and coming back around.
Mr. Chairman, we did have a complaint on this Thursday night. It's been alleged that Mr. Gray is actually selling tires out of this building, or proposing to sell tires. You know, R1 zoning is designated to be, provide quiet, low-density areas for single-family living and related recreational, religious, and educational facilities protected from all commercial industrial activity. I'm not 100% sure what's going on. We did supposed to, posted him on Friday to not to be running a business out of his house, or selling tires out of his house. It is alleged that there is outside storage of tires, and we're talking, I was told, at least 60, 70 tires out there. As you know, when they're stored outside as well, there are mosquito problems. So, staff is recommending that we continue this request until the next meeting to give us time to really find out for sure what's going on, if this is actually being used for business, or is actually being used for personal use that complies with R1 single-family dwelling district requirements.
What does this have to do with the building?
It has a lot to do if you're running a business out of that building, sir.
There's no tires in that building?
You've got tires behind that building, is my understanding.
Who's alleged that?
We got a phone call, because we notified the people, and the call was that you're running a business out of your house and selling tires. Is that correct or not? Are you selling tires out of your house? Is that correct or not?
I've collected tires for Pierce irrigation.
Well, you cannot sell any tires, or collect any tires, in a residential area. So, the tires have to completely leave the property for us to allow you to have this...
I can't store them back there for Pierce irrigation?
No, you cannot. Tires cannot be stored outside. And they, you know, that's a business use that you're doing there. Because you said you're storing them for Pierce irrigation, you can't do that.
Hey, rather than debate this at this meeting, this is not the proper forum for this debate. Am I right, Mr. Attorney?
I'd be correct.
Sir, the staff has requested a continuance on this item till the next meeting. We're asking your patience while this is determined...
May I make a statement?
Yes, sir.
I was supposed to be at the last meeting in April, and they didn't, they didn't set me up for the last meeting, but I've turned the papers and stuff in to Kathy over here.
Mr. Chairman, the paperwork that we needed was not turned in in a timely manner that needed to be on the agenda. I met with Mr. Gray to make sure that we had the information we needed.
And I've got my, I've got my contractor, and...
According to this notice that, did you receive a copy of this notice, sir? It was handed to you and mailed to you?
It was supposed to be posted on the property on Friday.
Yes.
Okay. You have a hearing on May the 16th to go over this stuff, and I would suggest that at this time, we continue this, if the commissioners are in favor of it, until you have this meeting, and at the next month, if everything's...
I took a number of tires out to Pierce irrigation today. I'm trying to clean up from what they were asking me to do.
Okay. Well, then, if you, if you're all in compliance by the time that you have this, this meeting that they've posted you with, then it should be no problem for you to come back and for us. We've granted curb cuts before.
Yeah, there's one just down this. You know where Chuck Hawk is?
No, sir.
Where he lives? He was, he was...
I know, we've granted them out there before, because they are on acre lots, and, and we want you to enjoy your, your ground, but you just can't run a business that, where people come and go and store tires outside. It's against our regulations. Everything would have to be stored inside the building, and then you still wouldn't have, people couldn't drive up and come into your property to do business.
But you, who's doing this?
Do you have a hearing date on that? You can go that hearing date, but we can schedule a time the next day or two to come out and meet with you?
You don't tell me who's accusing me?
I don't know who accused you of it, sir. All I know is what we have, and you just admitted that you're selling tires, or have tires for Pierce irrigation.
Yeah, I spoke to, to Cliff Pierce out there today, and he said, "Well, bring the tires out there and store them out there."
Do we have a request from somebody?
You asking for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion. Move that we continue this request until the next scheduled meeting to allow staff time to meet with the property owner to determine if he is in compliance with the R1 single-family residential district requirements.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue this, sir, till the next meeting, which is June the 13th. And in the meantime, on May the 16th, you have a meeting with staff at 9:00 a.m. Call a roll, please, Kathy.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
We continued it to the next meeting, sir. Thank you.
Do I have, do I have to have a curb cut? Can I come in off my driveway and get this done?
Mr. Chairman, he's out of order. He needs to come in, see staff tomorrow, make a scheduled meeting.
Yeah, can, we can't, we can't do any more business. We've conducted our business that's on our, on our agenda, and so, anything else that you want to do, you need to come back and see Mitchell's staff at the, at Community Development.
Now, what do I need to do, then? Would you tell me that?
Would you go see him in the morning? He gets there about nine o'clock. That'd be your best time.
Where's that? Oh, Mitchell, I've met you before. Okay.
Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you, sir. Item four, to hear a request by Dustin King, who is proposing to do a lot split on approximately 25 acres into two separate parcels, one being approximately five acre that would front directly onto Wilshire. Item two, to be approximately 20 acres of variance granted from the Board of Adjustments on the minimum lot frontage of 330 feet. The east 440 feet of government lot in the northeast quarter of, and the east 440 feet of the southwest quarter in Section 6 Township 12 North, range five west of the Indian Buridian Canadian County, better known as 13,200 West Wilshire, Yukon, Oklahoma. Yes, sir, can you identify yourself, please?
Good evening, I'm Dustin King. Address 2201 Waterford Lane, Yukon. And the property that we're proposing the lot split is about a quarter mile west of the Clydesdale Express Barn.
It's on the north side or south side of Wilshire?
On the south side.
Okay.
And the reason we're wanting to do a lot split, we're wanting to sell the five acres to some friends of ours, Russell and Emily Murrow, who are also live in Yukon right now as well, so. And then, I'll be willing to answer any questions about the exhibits.
What's the back 20 acres for? Is it going to run cattle on it, or what are you going to do?
No, we're going to have another house on that.
Oh, another house?
Yes.
So, your Board of Adjustments variance was because it doesn't have any frontage?
Correct. And we're going, we are going to have a shared road and utility easement for access to the back.
So, you'll have a permanent easement access?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we're, we're also willing to get all that finalized as far as the road easement before any building permits are granted, or anything like that.
Okay. Commissioners, y'all have questions?
So, there will be one entrance off of Wilshire for the 25 acres?
Yes, sir.
We have done these in the past, correct, Mitchell? We have records of...
We do. If you'll look, there is actually a map that shows some similar things right in that general area that's been done, that come from the county. Let me see where it's at.
So, have you had this, have you had this land perched and set up for, has the EQ been out there?
We had the soil tested for septic systems, and it passed. That should be in the exhibit.
And I see you've had the water, water tested, said...
Correct.
Yeah, they got water at 40 and water at 80.
Water at, first water at 22 feet, second water started at 80.
So, is there going to be two wells, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's an existing well already, well, two existing wells now.
Okay. There's two wells already on the property?
Yes, sir.
On your property?
Yes, sir.
So, you're not going to be drilling any more wells?
Nah, not at this time, and I'll, if we need to, I'll get a permit, like I did on this last one, but we shouldn't need to.
Yeah, it said water without a pump at five to seven gallons. It's pretty good, pretty good, I think. Anybody, anyone here that would like to visit about this with the commissioners? Yes, sir. If y'all step forward and say your name and address, please.
My name is George Ross.
Raise that up, microphone up just a little bit.
My name is George Ross. We live at 13,100 West Wilshire. We own 80 acres straight to the east of this property that they're trying, want to split, and we have a big problem with it. They put the well in on top of the hill, close to a gravel pit that is a freshwater reservoir. It has drained the reservoirs. The EPA's been out, and they're still working on it. The DEQ's been out, they're still working on it. Our own hydrologist has been out and suggested what we have to do about it. At the beginning in January and February, when they first came out, it was draining 47,000 gallons a day off that gravel pit, putting it in that well. It's down to 27 now because the, our hillside's what feeds this gravel pit, the water into it, is depleted so much. It's been estimated it's 3,140,000 gallons has already been drained off the hill.
So, where's the water going?
It's going out into gravel pit, down, it's, the top soil out there, it's just coarse sand and gravel. So, it's running off the top of it, straight down in that well, and then under the water field underneath of it. And I'm asking that the board postpone their decision on this until September, October, until the DEQ and the Environmental Protection Agency, because they're saying it's washing the pollutants that that pond has, that gravel pit has collected in the last 60 years, straight into our water system out there. And furthermore, we had our water well tested in February. It was eight feet down, and it was pumping 10 gallons a minute, and it took 15 minutes to recharge back up to the eight feet. We had it done two weeks ago. It's down 28 feet, and it's taken two and a half hours to recharge back up. So, it's completely depleted the water shed that's on our property.
Well, we can't continue it that long. I mean, that, we only have a 60-day variance, is that right, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, I'm asking to deny it right now.
Pardon me?
I'm asking you to deny it right now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Could I approach? Y'all have this map, I believe, and it has the spot of the new well done by the professionals over there. It's right here. And I don't know what he's talking about, but this is actually the west side of the property. It goes to the east. I don't know where we drilled on top of it. We've got, we drilled one well, that's right there. We did not drill on top of the hill. You can see where it's actually well, and that's the west side. And the professionals, that there most of the day, we haven't drilled right there. Yeah, I would...
Anybody else have anything they want to say on this?
My name is Shirley Morse. I live, my address is 13,300 West Wilshire, Yukon. I live to the west of Dustin's property. My well is, our wells are on the same end of the property. His is on the west end, mine is on the east end of my property. Our concern also was the water. We've drilled two wells. My brother has drilled over the years. I've lived there 65 years, and my brother's lived there all his life also. He's drilled, he's on the other side of me, further west. He's drilled several wells, three or four. Mr. Ross, who lives on the east side of him, has also drilled three or four, five wells, I don't know. We just came out of a drought, so the water is better now than it's been in probably 10 years, last year and this year. But our concern was if we continue to develop out there and other wells are drilled, and we run out of water, what, what is our recourse? What, we're in the city limits. City utilities don't go that far. I just wanted to state my concerns regarding that.
Yeah, things have changed a lot in Yukon in the last 30 years since I've been here, or 40, and now starts way out in the country also. They have water districts out there, but this is not covered by a water district, is that correct?
Uh-uh. Blue Quail is right across the road from us. There's two, there's a Blue Quail north and a Blue Quail south, and that was one of the reasons whenever they first put those properties in, those developments in, that we had to drill another well, because our well was contaminated. So, we drilled another one, deeper one.
Now, Blue Quail is tied on with Oklahoma City somewhere now, aren't they?
And they have their own water district.
Their own water district?
Yeah, they had, they have their own water. Their development has their own water. And you, I've been told you have to be in their area to receive their water.
I think they get it from Oklahoma City somewhere.
Uh, I don't know. I don't think so.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge.
I might be wrong.
I wish they did, so maybe I could get on it.
Well, you never can tell with the way things are going, you know, when, when the things, the city would be able to develop out that way. I don't know. I have no idea. Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, any commissioners have any comments, or anything they want to say?
Yeah, I have a question. The applicant state that he's drilled all the wells he's going to drill, did I hear that properly?
Yes.
Well, he can always get another permit to drill another one, if he, he'd have to request it again, so...
He'd have to get approval for that. But...
I mean, he got approval for the current ones.
I don't think we're here to approve a well, we're here for a plat.
Yeah, man has a right to split his property off if it meets with the city regulations. Yes, sir?
My name is Wayne Morse. I live at 13,300 Wilshire. And I had no problem with, I mean, he bought the property, he knew wherever he wants to, it's his, and he should be able to do what he wants to. I had no problem with that. My only question is if you allow development to continue in that area, what if we all run out of water? I mean, do we have, does this, it's within the city limits, is Yukon going to purchase with water?
I mean, I'm, I don't know what other development we're talking about.
I don't know either, but I never thought this property would ever be so. But who's to say? In my lifetime after I die, I couldn't care less.
Yeah. Well, was this, was this property, it was posted and listed for sale, or anyone could buy it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I agree with you, man has a right to what he wants, but he couldn't, are you worried about him developing behind the 20 acres?
I don't know what he's going to do, and I don't, it's, like I say, it's none of my business.
Yeah.
It's property, but I'm not, I'm...
I don't know what the answer is to your point.
Somebody else could develop somewhere else, and we could all be sitting out there. I don't have a mortgage, but if somebody's got a mortgage on a house, they ain't got no water, it ain't worth a dime.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions from the audience, or questions from the commissioners? Any other comments? Okay, I'm ready for some type of motion, if someone would care to make one.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
In the case of the application for a lot split for 13,200 West Wilshire submitted by Dustin King, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that this item be approved with the following additional conditions. Condition one, necessary access easement shall be provided through a separate instrument prior to issuance of a building permit.
Question, Mr. Attorney, does this go to the city council, or do we, does this end with us here tonight?
I believe it ends here.
Okay. All right, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion to approve this? All right, call a roll, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your comments. Good luck to you. Item five is to hear a request by Crafton Toll on behalf of Legacy Lakes for a final plat commencing at the northeast corner of Section 28, and then along the line, well, this is 5.1 acres, and it's right across the street from a high school railroad track running along Highway 4 there. And the address, do we have an address on that? We don't. Do I need to read all of this, sir?
Okay. If I was getting paid by the hour, I'd say yes, but I think we're good. I, I think, I think everybody should understand where, where the property's located.
I can read some more of it here. A distance of 65 feet to the northwest corner of Common Area B in Legacy Lakes Phase 2 addition at the point of beginning, thence along the westerly line of said Common Area B for the next five calls, a distance of 67.17 feet. And thence along the westerly line of said Common Area A. And this is the part we had in here several months ago to change from residential to a commercial designation. Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Niles, a developer. Be glad to answer any questions. Basically...
Mr. Chairman, we know who he is, but for the record and for the tape, we have to have him read in his address.
Read in which address?
Just the one you're living at, or your business is at, whatever you want.
My home address is 9840 Stone Bridge Drive, Yukon.
Okay. You've got, you've got this divided into...
Three lots.
Three lots along here, right?
The north lot is sold, and the south lot is sold. The one in the middle is not sold yet.
Really?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Be glad to answer any other questions, but basically, it's Ranchwood, along Ranchwood from where the mortgage company is to the corner of Vanymet. It goes around the corner of Vanymet down, I don't know how far it is, then back east into it along the west side of the lake, or on the northeast, northwest corner.
That area that, where the attorney is there, at one time, he was going to put in duplexes along there. Do you know if that's still going to happen or not?
Along Vanymet?
Uh-huh.
It's still zoned that way, yes, most likely so. It'll be R1 or R2, most likely.
Yeah, okay.
But this is separate entry from that area over there. There is entry off of Vanymet and entry off of Ranchwood, and the ones off of Ranchwood is shared with that center lot on both ends of it, based on, I guess, the highway department's requirements.
Okay. Now, I see the attorney in there. Any questions from the commissioners? He's finishing up with what he was required to do by the code of ordinances here in the city. Someone care to read the draft motion?
I'll do it.
Okay.
In the case of the application for a final plat for Legacy Lakes Phase 3, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any more comments? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Someone care to read the draft motion?
I'll do it. In the case of the application for a final plat for Legacy Lakes Phase Three, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any more comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Thank you, Jim. Glad to see that getting to go over there. It's good. Okay.
Good deal.
All right. Any other business to come before us tonight?
No new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. How about staff, y'all have anything? Cindy, glad to see you up and around.
Thank you.
Hope you continue to do well. Any comments from...
No, just thank the city employees for doing a great job on Festival of the Child.
Yes, I was out there with my two oldest.
Big crowd, everybody had fun.
We had a blast out there. There was so much to do.
Okay, if there's no further business, this meeting's adjourned.